And I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange. Steve Morantz.
Here.
Richard Foster?
Here.
And Marco?
Here.
Okay, and staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Paul Pasterzic?
Here.
Deb House?
Here.
Here.
Okay, and Chief John Dearborn?
Here.
Oh, okay, great.
Eddie.
All right, I can see you. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's offers suspends the requirements of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all public, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, via video conference via Zoom, as posted in the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For resident comments, after announcements of COVID-19 updates and general announcements, I will afford public comment as follows. I'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once they have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on Long Meadow Network. The public is encouraged to follow along with using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting them by name to provide comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that generates accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by rule call vote. And with that being said, I will ask our fire chief, John Dearborn, to give us an update on COVID-19.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you to the rest of the board for allowing me to speak this evening. So I'll give you just a quick update on the, uh, on the town numbers. We're down to forty-two active cases today. We've been back down into the yellow. We still see a little increase this week in our percent positivity and that doesn't directly relate to the number of positive cases. It's really based on testing. COVID is still very prominent in our community. You know, so I strongly encourage every, all of our residents, continue their great work in their prevention strategies. We're tracking all of the cases, both in town and in the school system. We have really excellent communication with the superintendent's team, his nurses. So we're able to really identify cases early. We're still not seeing any evidence of in-school spread, so we're supporting the continued hybrid model, three cohort system with a school. On some positive note, all five really committees have been, at least received the first round of vaccination. So that's great. Three of them were through the federal program, two of them were through the HUD program. I actually went to the Glen Meadow Vaccination Clinic and it was really inspiring to see, you know, a lot of these folks have served for a lot of years and to see them get, get that vaccination. They were, they're really happy to get it. So transitioning the vaccine conversation to from those facilities, but I still have a lot of people that I'm very committed to getting vaccinated in this community. So I'm not sure when the last time I briefed you guys, I apologize. So we received some news, and I think we updated on it, that the state has limited us to one hundred doses per week through the month of February. That has not been a real smooth process. We have shipment information on our hundred doses. We've received, what would they call it, prep kit today, which is the campaign cards and syringes, things like that. About three minutes before this meeting started, we actually got a UPS tracking number. So we're hopeful to actually receive our first batch tomorrow. Our plans right now are to probably start vaccinating some folks early next week. It'll be a combination of our volunteer force, I'll explain our reasoning for that, and seventy-five and older that some folks that we've identified that are challenged, so. So why are we going to vaccinate our volunteer force first? We do anticipate, based on all the information the state has given us, towards the end of February, we're going to have reliable supplies of vaccine. In order for us to distribute our goals of five hundred to a thousand doses a day, we need a very robust vaccination force. So we're going, and if you timed it out, we want to give the first dose. It's twenty-eight days to the second. We want to make sure we get our second dose into our volunteers so we can run robust vaccination clinics with our volunteer force at the end of February. I'm a little behind schedule on that, but we're going to do the best we can on that. Again, without any vaccine, there's not much I can do about it. We've been really researching a lot of lists of council aging and the COVID team and partner. We're keeping lists. We're assisting people with making appointments with the Eastfield Mall. The Big Y and Long Meadow came up as a site we're unaware of, and we've attempted ourselves a few times to log into that site to make appointments, and though by knowledge, no reason successful, so I'm not sure that they're actually. I'm actually planning going down and speaking with the pharmacist tomorrow to actually get what their actual plan is. And certainly if anybody has more information than I do, I welcome it. So that's about it for the vaccination. The clinic is built, it's ready to go, it's supplied. We had over three hundred volunteers, which blows my mind. I can't tell you how much I appreciate everybody. We have sixty-six people that are either fully vaccinated or partially vaccinated. There are actually people who can administer the vaccine, so I'm really encouraged. It's just, somebody needs to put vaccine in my hands, so. There, through the chair, I'll take questions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Tom. Lynn, did I miss anything on that?
Oh, you covered everything.
I apologize. I just ran into house from a call down on the highway, so.
Oh, all right. Well, thanks, Chief. Any questions from the board? I guess you can just go ahead and ask them if you'd like. All right, so no questions from the board, that's good.
I must have done a good job tonight, Tom.
Yes, well, that's good. Well, we've been bombarded with a lot of information about the vaccine and all that sort of thing.
Yeah, Tom, if I could just speak to kind of our public information strategy, we're really trying to keep it based on information we know. You might have noticed a lot of communities announced clinics in the next few days. They're all in the same boat we are. We're sharing information back and forth. They have not physically actually have their vaccines in hand right now. They've scheduled clinics. We didn't want to do that. We wanted to make sure we actually had the product in hand so we could act. We didn't want, we didn't want to contribute to the confusion. So that's really our strategy and certainly I welcome any feedback from the board or certainly the residents are communicating quite clearly with us on it, so.
Okay, so good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I know that folks are just going to be mostly looking forward to being able to get their shots and not have to worry. So, thank you. And again, folks should just look at the website for any information they need. All right, the next thing we look at is announcements. I'll ask Lynn to start them, and I have a couple.
Sure, give me just a minute. Let me pull.
Okay.
Okay, we just discussed the vaccination clinics. Definitely tune into longmeadow.org for most current updates. And the state has announced that Eastfield Mall is available for clinics in Western Mass right now. The annual town election nomination papers are available. The annual town election date is June 22nd, 2021. Nomination papers are available by appointment only by contacting the town clerk at 565-4103. The deadline to obtain nomination papers is 5:00 PM on Friday, March 12th. And the deadline to submit nomination papers is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 16th. Is that right? That doesn't seem like it's right. We can verify that.
Fifty.
You can pick up papers now, Lynn. That's just the deadline. Turn them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Not that, okay. And fifty certified signatures of registered voters are required to be eligible to be included on the ballot. A list of positions is available on the website for those positions that are up in June. And the annual town census has gone out. It's been mailed and you can return it via envelope that was included in the census or you can drop it in the drop box on the front of Town Hall. This information is important. It's for helping prepare the annual street list, jurors list, school list, and provides proof of residency for veterans benefits and senior citizen programs. This form does not register you to vote, but it does keep your current voter registration active. And hours at the community house for the satellite offices are Wednesdays and Fridays. Moving forward, the assessors office has hours on Wednesdays from ten to one and Fridays from nine to noon during January, so that actually ended last week. And Monday, February 1st, they were open today from ten to one. And this is out of date considering today's February 1st. So that ends my announcements here, and these are all available on the town along Meadow website.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. I just want to announce a couple of things. One is there's a public hearing webinar for Long Meadow Street and Converse Street reconstruction. So we've talked about this in the past, that we have some funds. Mass DOT is going to have this public hearing because we're going to be redoing the intersections along Meadow and Converse Street and then Converse, or Long Meadow Street where it hits the the town of Springfield property line, those lights. And we're hoping that it will work as effectively as the changes they've made to the end of Converse Street where it hits Dwight Road. That's much more efficient than it has ever been. And so you, there is a information on the website going to, you know, this webinar period, and they have a comment period that runs from, from today until February 11th. And so if you look it over and they talk about the resurfacing and the intersection improvements and you have any comments, especially if you're a person that uses those intersections regularly, you may want to go to the website, find this, and review this tape message. The other thing is tonight we'll be discussing like the second draft of written select board rules and procedures. And we're doing this to improve members of the boards' understanding of how the board should operate. And a lot of these folks who've been on the board are pretty aware of. We are going to do some fine tuning. The town manager, Lynn, has realized that not having these things in a written form to review is kind of problematic. And so it'll be a good guide. And so, you know, hopefully folks listening will have a better idea of how we approach things, that there are some constraints on the way boards, you know, operate. And we've talked about some of those things in the past. So we will review that. And then the other thing, and of course, we'll review it this time and then we'll make some decisions on it in a subsequent meeting. And the other thing is there's been some discussion about public records law and correspondences made to the select board in a way that they wouldn't interfere with public records law. And so we want, we encourage residents to contact, you know, the select board and other members of the town if they're unhappy with the way things are growing. But there are some limits. We can't, you know, talk to a person who says, well, I've talked to two other people on the select board and this is what they're saying, so that would open up some conflicts of interest and the. So there's more to this than, than I'm really presenting at this point. But what I'm going to tell you is that the town manager is looking into this with our legal counsel, and this is something that will be on the agenda in the future. And we, for those of you who are, you know, have concerns about correspondence with the select board and how those are handled, I could just ask you to be patient that we will get to it. It is, you know, this is a government function and it's not quite as quick as most people would appreciate. And that's all I have for announcements.
I just had two more, if you, if you wouldn't mind. Just if anyone's watching tonight in real time, we do have two weather-related announcements with the storm that's hitting us right now. There is a parking ban in effect. There's no on-street parking at any time right now until 8:00 PM tomorrow night. And trash pickup for Tuesday has been delayed one day. There is a full listing on the town website of all the streets that are impacted for tomorrow's pickup schedule, which will now be pushed off until Wednesday.
Great. And most people who've signed up probably would receive a notice, a phone call, or a text about that information. So you wouldn't have your trash out there for a couple of days. All right, that's it. I guess we'll move to resident comments. Lynn, has anyone identified that they're interested in making comment tonight?
No, I do not see anyone here to make resident comment, and I have not heard from anyone either.
All right. Well, if they contact you in the next few minutes, we can put them on. So the the next thing, I don't know, it's, you know, I guess this is pretty standard fare for DPW to take care of the roads. You know, we appreciate them going out there on a day like today. It reminds me of what a dangerous job plowing the roads in our town can be. And we really should be mindful of that and appreciate the workers who are out there during the, during this difficult weather to make it so we can get to work tomorrow morning and so forth, and I'm sure they'll do their best. So Lynn, you haven't heard it from anybody? For public comments?
Correct, no.
All right, so let's move on to the select board comments. I see Mark Gold's hand. We'll start there.
Thanks, Tom. I have two quick comments. They both relate to what you said earlier, Tom, about putting together procedures for the select board's meetings. And I just want to make a quick comment on, first of all, about the last meeting, one of which I, both of which have to do with issues that would have been resolved or would have been unnecessary had we had these same policies in place. One was my comments to Peter Land, and I since called him to apologize for interrupting him at the last meeting, but I think it was important that we keep the meetings, the select board meetings. The other, the other one was a vote that was taken on a select board endorsement for a petition. Those who watched the meeting or were at the meeting recall, I voted present. And that was more of a vote that I had said to myself, I won't vote on anything that comes up to the meeting the first time. We saw that with our vote about the gas pipeline. Luckily asked town council to look at it before it went out, and the town council said that one shouldn't have gone out, so it was more of a vote that I said, I'm not going to vote on anything the first time. Hopefully with these procedures in place, that won't come up again, so I appreciate people's indulgence of our last meeting and we'll move forward with these new policies coming forward. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other members of the board have comment? Okay, there we're done. We'll move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So a bittersweet announcement to start us off. I received a notice from the finance director, Paul Pasterzic, that after thirty-four years of service to the town, he will retire at the end of June 2021. Paul started his career with the town in 1987 as the town accountant and has served as finance director for the past fifteen years. With Paul's leadership, the town has benefited from an upgraded credit rating, double A plus, award-winning budget documents, and implementation of an OPEB trust fund. As many know and have experienced firsthand, Paul is the go-to person when you have a question about anything. He provides guidance, support, direction, and a listening ear. His retirement is very well-deserved and he will be leaving incredibly big shoes to fill. The DPW site on Dwight Road, the town has filed a complaint in Hampton Superior Court under General Law, Chapter 21E, Section 4A and 5 for the costs associated with the cleanup of the 170 Dwight Road site. This filing includes future costs and attorney's fees. Reuse of Greenwood Center with the move of the Adult Center, Veteran Services, and the Public Health Nurse Office to the new facility on the horizon. We have engaged Hill Engineering to assist with a feasibility study for the possibility of relocating Town Hall and Community House offices to Greenwood. There is more space at Greenwood than what there is currently available at the Community House or Town Hall combined. And it offers, more importantly, ADA-accessible space. As Tom mentioned during announcements, the Long Meadow Street Improvements Mass DOT Design Public Hearing is live right now. And you can go watch that public hearing. There's a link on the town website. And you can submit comments between now and February 11th. We have submitted an expression of interest form to MVP to gauge their interest in the energy resiliency projects that we had submitted the last round. We're trying to determine whether or not this is an area that they are interested in funding this next grant cycle. And if, if they are, then we will make some refinements to that application and resubmit. If not, we have plenty of other projects that we've been working at for. And Bliss and Laurel Parks, there is a working group that is actively meeting now. This is a spin-off to the Conway School of Design Master Planning Work that took place over the springtime. And this is through a core group of volunteers, along with Andy Fisk from Connecticut River Conservancy, myself, Barry Jarvis, Mario Mazza, and Tim Keen, the town engineer. We're meeting now to discuss where we go from here with this master plan in hand. And we've had two meetings so far, and we are working to set priorities, one of which is a comprehensive stormwater management plan for the entire town that will help guide some of these projects forward. And the volunteer group is also researching forest stewardship plans with a goal toward preparing a plan that would be applicable for all of our parks. Wolf Swamp Field Renovations, I was out to the site two weeks ago and visited to check on the progress prior to tonight. We really didn't have a lot of snow and that mild weather has allowed them to continue the work throughout this winter season. And they actually picked up some time that we had lost with a late start in the fall. And the treasure collector position, we had been posted. We've had some interviews. And depending on the outcome of this first round of interviews, we may be holding a second round of interviews in the near future. And last week, there was the Mass Municipal Association meeting, which is normally held in Boston, and that we all travel out there to. This year it was held virtually. I think many of us did try to attend some sessions. It was nice that they offered it, but I think we're all looking forward to being there in person next year. There's a lot to be gained by being in person at those events. And that's the end of my report. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Lynn on the report? Steve Morantz, I see your hand.
Yes, Lynn, can you give us a little more about the energy resiliency grant that apparently we not get? What are we looking for and why we may be reconsidered?
Sure. So this project, just to refresh memories, was for solar solar arrays and accompanying solar storage at the adult, new Adult Center site, the DPW facility, the high school, which serves as our shelter in an emergency event at the Town Hall campus, primarily police, fire, and Town Hall itself. We submitted the MVP grant for helping to design and prepare bid documents for those projects. We were not awarded. We were just shy of a few points for being considered. Energy resiliency is a funded area in MVP, but it's not something that is highly funded. We, we, as in the town, loses points for not being an environmental justice community. And that's something that we'll always have to grapple with. But we did have a solid application. It just, by all accounts, appears that it's not an area that MVP is heavily funding at the moment, so we have a meeting set up with them in the near future to gather some more information on whether or not this is an area that they will fund more heavily in this next round. And depending on the outcome, we may submit for one or two sites or just one site and really kind of put all our eggs in that basket or not submit at all and look at going in a different direction.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for board members? Okay, yeah, my only questions, a couple of things, I guess. One is, you know, we had talked about the Greenwood Center and the, you know, the condition of it, and I know that there was a lot of folks in the community who felt that that the Adult Center should move, that it should stay in that space. And, you know, there were a lot of arguments pretty clearly about how that space wasn't really big enough for the Adult Center. And as we look at all the types of programs that are going to be offered in the new Adult Center, it's encouraging. But in terms of using it for Town Hall, Lynn, your basic assessment, I mean, because I don't imagine you would have ordered this, people to look at this, you know, is that in terms of the square feet and, you know, types of activities run out of Town Hall, that you think that would really be an adequate space and it's worth looking at at this point, right?
I definitely think it's the next phase in what we consider for reuse of Greenwood. We had previously had Westcon look at the site to see if it would be suitable for the Regional Emergency Communication Center. They determined that it would not be, and they're pursuing a different location. And now it made the most sense to me to consider whether or not we had town use or town need for that space before we decide what maybe the third phase would be. If there isn't use for municipal offices there, then, you know, we look at some other possible use of the space. But I did want to explore this. Facilities in Town Hall are very, very cramped, even in a non-COVID world, and the building is not accessible. And then the same with the Community House, although it does offer a little bit more accessibility than Town Um, and then the same with the community house, although it does offer a little bit more accessibility than town hall. It is um, it is really not ideal office setting for municipal staff.
Okay, and I know we've talked about this offline too, but in terms of to make our current town hall accessible to residents at, at all levels of the building would require an elevator. And you think that could run in the cost of three million plus, right?
Uh, yeah, it would be more than just an elevator. The um, doorways would also need to be widened, the um, into all of the office spaces. Um, there's certainly, uh, depending on the amount of the renovation that you would be doing, it may trigger other building code requirements, meaning additional bathrooms, because I, I don't think there's enough bathrooms already to accommodate the number of workers in the building. Um, and then we would need to do some ramp improvements on the outside of the building to, to get into the spaces. Certainly it would need a, a much more detailed look and an engineer and an architect to take a look at that, whether it's feasible. Um, and I would estimate that the cost would be much, much higher than um, what we would be looking at to move to Greenwood.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, Tom, Tom, I did have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Richard Foster.
Yeah, Lynn, uh, as part of that study, are they doing uh, doing any look backs at the existing facility that you, you guys are in now for adaptive restoration of those facilities or future use?
Uh, for town hall and community house spaces?
Right.
No, that's not within the scope of their feasibility study.
Okay, within their scope of the feasibility study, is there any cost estimates being put in for uh, renovation of the facilities?
For Greenwood, yes, they will give us estimates on um, what it would take to convert some of those rooms into offices.
Okay, is there any uh, any associated preliminary plans that go along with it? Or is it just going to be back of the envelope estimating?
No, it would have a more detailed report that would accompany it. Um, they will also be reaching out to the offices in town hall and community house, meeting with them, viewing their current space, hearing about um, what their future needs may be and to make sure that all of that is accounted for in their report.
Okay, I do another question, is there, is there going to be a public input uh, equation on this preliminary study?
Not at the moment, um, it's really just an engineer coming in to look at this current space and then look at the current office spaces and make a recommendation um, based on that.
Okay, and you know, Tom and the rest of board members, this had actually been floated several times over the past years. It's, it's not, um, it's nothing really new. There's always been that question mark on what would they do with, with that building once they left it out of there or even uh, you know, in the present configuration. Uh, one last thing, Lynn, when, when will the, will the study be complete?
Um, it shouldn't take any more than three months to do it. They've already started the work, um, and it really shouldn't, it shouldn't take them that long to um, to get a report done and back to me and then I will share it with the board.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Tom.
Okay, great. And um, the only other thing I, I should go back to is the Mass Mutual or the um, Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting. Uh, I, I missed going to Boston, but it was nice that I could go to, to more than one session. We still have access to all the sessions online, so I would encourage other members of the board to try and view as many as you can when you can fit them in. Um, and the other thing is, of course, the comment, uh, you know, in regards to retirement of Paul Pasterzik, um, you know, I, I think we all have a lot to say on that, you know, he's done such a great job. And um, it's, you know, I mean, every year, he doesn't surprise me, you know, he does such a wonderful job with uh, our investments. And then every now and then he refinances things, it saves the towns, you know, millions of dollars. Uh, it would be nice if we got a statistic of how many millions he's actually earned the town and saved the town over the many years he's been here. Um, but then he'd want a big bonus and a big send-off. But um, all right, so we will move on to old business. And uh, the first issue is approval of the minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Uh, we approve the minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting of the select board.
Okay.
Second.
And a second, okay. Uh, Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Um?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and now new business, the first is the annual town meeting discussion uh, regarding uh, possibly, well, needing to change the meeting. Uh, I, I think that's the date of it, it's pretty much set and has been set in stone for a long time. But um, given the COVID environment and, and the last meeting went very effectively outdoors, so we're looking at trying to move that. And I don't know, Lynn, if you want to be the first person to speak to this or if we want to put Rebecca on?
Um, sure, I'm happy to start and I think Rebecca is uh, here, so when she's free, she can join us. Oh, there she is. Great, great. Uh, I don't want to jump on your toes here, Rebecca, if you wanted to, okay. Um, great, so yes, um, the annual town meeting is normally the second Tuesday in May, May, which is May eleventh this year. Um, given that um, it's a Tuesday night and that we will still likely be in, very much in the, within the pandemic, um, the, the thought was it should be outside, it would make everyone feel more comfortable and provide better um, airflow if it were outside. And having a town meeting in early May, outside on a Tuesday at seven PM is problematic because of lighting. Uh, we, we likely would not have very much um, daylight left in the day. So there was conversation about looking at a different day. Uh, there's also um, consideration because the warrant is, is getting quite lengthy at this point. Um, we did not have a fall town meeting, so many of those articles, if not all of them, would be continued over to this annual town meeting plus our traditional annual town meeting items, the budget, the capital plan, the community preservation articles. Um, so at this point, I think we're pushing close to um, fifty to sixty warrant articles, if I am recalling it, the last draft I saw correctly. Uh, and the idea would be to move it to a Sunday in June and begin at one PM in the afternoon to allow adequate time um, to discuss and um, hold the meeting and not lose daylight and not feel rushed.
Okay, um, so Rebecca, do you want to add to the, our foundation understanding?
Sure, and if I can have just a quick second of indulgence to share my appreciation for Paul Pasterzik. Um, I've worked with him uh, for many, many years on different town boards that I've been on. And um, it was, you know, it's, it's, obviously everybody retires eventually, but um, it, it's going to be sad to see him go. I, I deeply appreciate all the work that he has done for the town. Um, and, and more importantly, the kindness with which he's done it. He's always been kind and professional to everyone. And so I, I just needed to say that at the start, so sorry for the uh, the uh, the tangent there, but yes, uh, as Lynn had mentioned, June sixth is the ideal date for this meeting. Um, and one of the benefits of having this a little bit later is that if citizens are going to get petitions, having a little bit of a later schedule to start would make it safer for them to do so. Um, also, as Lynn had mentioned, with the afternoon start, we are able to get things done a whole lot uh, earlier. Um, and we would not have the need for the lighting as it, as it uh, was needed the last time. Was there any question that you all had about that that I can answer?
Uh, I see our goals here, are you good with that part?
Yeah, Rebecca, the, the only concern I have with putting it on a Sunday at noon time is if it rains, you know, we lose a, a week and a week in, in June pushes us painfully close to our next fiscal, the fiscal year that starts July first. Is there any thought of potentially doing it, you know, Saturday with the rain date of Sunday or some point? You know, I mean, nobody really likes that or having two days. I mean, the, we really need to consider, it could rain in June and then we'd really be in trouble.
I hear you. Um, and, and one of the things that I really valued last time for, for planning was John Dearborn, Chief Dearborn's um, knowledge of weather patterns and understanding of how things go in, in that time. And as um, we get a little bit closer to that date, we'll have a better, obviously a better picture of when the rain date would be. Um, my reluctance to have it on a Saturday is that it's uh, it's considered a holy day for many people and I don't want to infringe on that, that time. Um, Sunday afternoon is a, is a great deal more open. Um, I welcome other ideas uh, from the board. Um, and obviously it's, it's your choice as to when it's set, but um, this Sunday, at least having that first weekend allows us, if we do have to push it back, well, it's the thirteenth is the uh, the next Sunday.
Well, if, if you're looking for suggestions, maybe we can have it like a Thursday night and then a, then s, and Thursday night, no, we're only going to cover first ten items, which aren't everything up to the budget, generally it's the, the routine kinds of things. And we know it's only going to last uh, you know, an hour and a half and we have plenty of light and then at least knocks an hour and a half off the meeting. We, we, we gotta do something to, to protect ourselves from the weather, protect ourselves from a twelve-hour meeting.
Well, I certainly don't want to have a twelve-hour meeting. Um, but I think that the time that is invested in a multi-day meeting would exceed what we would accomplish for a one, a one afternoon meeting. Um, you know, given the use of consent agendas, I don't see that every article will take an extraordinarily long time. I think that we could accomplish it in one afternoon.
Okay, uh, any other questions for board members? Um, so I, I presume from your um, what you just said that we would try to use a lot of consent agendas and sort of move this thing quickly, kind of paralleling the last, would this be like a redo of, of our last town meeting where we tried to move things through fairly quickly?
For the June meeting, yes, the June meeting.
For June meeting, all right. Um, but of course, there'd be some issues that we would need to discuss, you know, because we've put them off for uh, quite a while.
Oh, of course, and, and the deliberation that the citizens do at, at the town meeting is essential. And so you, you, you don't want to foreclose deliberation on these, these issues. Um, but some of the, the more mundane issues, we can take care of uh, quickly with a consent agenda.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. And so the idea of having more than one date is, isn't really something we need to consider if we start at one o'clock on a Sunday?
I, just in terms of thinking of the setup that's required and all of the volunteer hours that go into it, um, the meeting doesn't just start right at one o'clock. There are a couple of hours, if not several hours beforehand, where um, the sound crew is setting up, the custodial staff is setting up the chairs, um, setting up taping, marking the, the ground. There's a considerable amount of work that goes into um, the event and you would be doubling that work if you have it on two evenings or two, two, two days.
Okay, now the last meeting, we did have water available for residents uh, free of charge. And if we had a long meeting, would we consider doing, you know, water and maybe some, some snacks of some kind, you know, I don't know, just little uh, granola bars or something? I mean, would that be something? Because that's a long time for people, especially some people. Um, you know, if they have a certain condition where they have to have food within a certain amount of time, they could feel like, I can't stay at the meeting unless there's some, some substance. Uh, is that a possibility? Have you ever heard any towns doing that?
Yes, there, there were some towns that created um, mini-care packages, but they, they had a clearer idea of how many people would be coming. Um, the town manager and I have talked about uh, doing preliminary surveys, investigating different options, even like um, uh, confirming people's reservations, as it were, to ensure that we knew of a set amount of people who intended on coming. And that would allow us to, to get anything if the town wanted to, to purchase that for the, the, the citizens. Um, and I don't know from a health perspective, how that would be if you have people eating during the meeting um, and, and would invite the chief's feedback on that as well as the board of health's feedback.
Yeah, because I don't know if, if that's ever an issue, but, because it's a, how many hours total do you think the meeting would take?
I'm hesitant to suggest, because as soon as I get that one day, it's gonna, you know, go over, um.
Well, people may not show up if you're, if you're truthful about how long it's going to be. But I, but that's my, that's my, my argument is if it's going to be too long, then we should have some, something there. And, and maybe we could find a way to take it out of the, a budget item, you know?
It looks like the chief is raising his hand.
Oh, okay, thanks. Chief Dearborn?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, I, I just would remind the board that these outdoor meetings are already considerably more expensive than our indoor meetings. So anything, anything you add, um, is basically unfunded. So um, we are, we will push some of it towards cares, but when you get in the weeds with issues like that, it probably wouldn't be covered. So just caution the board with that. So um, maybe BYOS, if you bring your own snacks, there's something we could do, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking more for, just as, for people who are diabetic. Um, I, I don't know, there could be some other, that's the only one I'm aware of, but there could be some other sort of uh, conditions that people would be, and they probably would bring their own snacks anyways, but um, it's something we could consider at some point.
I think people do anyways for, even though they, you know, we, we have the policy of no eating in the gym.
Oh, yeah.
So.
But this will be on, sorry.
But in any case, the, the June sixth date is the, in my view, the, the more important thing to set. Um, and I've talked with town council and the town manager has talked with town council about being able to set that date and he assured us that there's no problem under Mass General Law, even though we do have the bylaw uh, regarding the second Tuesday in May. So I wanted to make sure that that concern that you had raised earlier was addressed.
Okay, great. Uh, any other questions for Rebecca or Lynn on this? All right, hearing none, thank you Rebecca for joining us.
When will a decision be made or have we made the decision or when will the decision be made? I mean, will it be made when we, when we set the warrant? It'll be in the warrant? And do we need a waiver from, to do, can we just do that counter to the, to the charter? Based on the emergency procedures of, of?
Well, my understanding, and I think Lynn will probably jump in, is that the governor has, has made some exceptions because of COVID already in terms of when meetings can happen. And so I, my understanding is if we put this on the, the, the state and it's um, you know, if the town moderator is in agreement that we would just, when we vote in the warrant, we vote in the state. Lynn, I don't know if you had any?
Um, I, my understanding is the select board has to set the date. Um, and I think um, this will come back to you at your next meeting to take a vote to actually do that. Uh, because it wasn't posted here um, for you to take a vote on it. Um, but, but you do actually need to set it and it is by state law, not by the governor's emergency orders.
Okay, all right, I stand corrected. All right, um, any other questions?
So if we set a new date, then I'm assuming we're also going to set a new date for when warrant articles are due? Would that also, would that be same vote at the same time?
It would probably be a good idea to look at all those dates, the, the budget process, when it goes, uh, when the budget goes to the uh, to the printer and distributed to the townsfolk. Everything could probably be pushed back a near equal amount of time that the town meeting is pushed back.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any other questions? Okay, so we will continue on to the uh, discuss this in our next meeting and, and take a vote on it at that point. We are looking for an update by our finance director on fiscal year twenty-one, review uh, and ex, review the revenue and expenditure budget and update on the fiscal year twenty-two revenue projections based on the governor's budget. So Paul, I will turn it over to you.
Right, um, usually at this time of the year, you try to get an update of where the current fiscal year is. Um, and then how the current fiscal year is going to impact the next fiscal year. Um, again, also, especially since we've set up some, some projections already and do we need to modify them or are, what kind of impact they're going to have? Um, first thing I would say with regard to the FY twenty-one revenues, um, I believe we are okay um, that we will meet. that we will meet the projections overall. There will certainly be certain categories that are above the projection and certainly other categories that are not going to meet the projection, but I think the bottom line will be pretty close. Um I do not think there will be a windfall in any which way, shape or form of of any of the categories. Um the one, there well, there's two that I'm really worried about at this point in time and seeing where they are um in comparison to prior years. And that is, first of all, the motor vehicle excise tax commitment. Um that's about an estimate of almost two point four million dollars for the year. Um and as much as our revenues are ahead of last year's pace at this point in time, the large motor vehicle excise tax commitment that folks probably just got in the mail within the last week or so um is usually our largest of the year, was about a hundred thou- hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than the previous fiscal year. Um so that's something that we're going to have to watch, that is a large number. Um it's just something that we're going to have a watch to watch for, not only for the results of this ending fiscal year, but also because that same identical number of that near, I think it's two point three nine million, that estimate that is used in FY twenty-one is the same estimate that is used in FY twenty-two. So if we do not meet that two point three nine million, um we are going to have to reduce our projections, our revenue projections for FY twenty-two. It's something to watch, sometimes there's some variances going on um at the state level, not getting um all the files incorrectly and or on a timely basis. And we have two other large commitments before the end of the fiscal year, so we'll keep our eyes on that. Um currently, and I don't know if the chief would chime in, we are a little bit behind in our in our ambulance revenues. Uh again, I think there's a large or continued postponement of of certain uh medical procedures that might have required transports by the uh by the fire department that are not going on. Um and those revenues are a little bit behind from the previous year's estimate. Um and this one is also important because that's probably the only category that I had increased from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. There was an increase projected of about fifty thousand dollars. Um and if we do not meet the FY twenty, if we certainly do not meet the FY twenty-one projection, um we're going to have to downgrade that FY twenty-two projection. So there are two areas that we just have to keep our eyes on. As far as the state revenues, uh those seem to be on track with what was projected. Uh we did find that they uh had neglected to pay us some money back that was owed to us in FY twenty related to two thousand and nineteen, the two thousand and nineteen reimbursement for uh the veterans blind and surviving spouses exemption. So that money just came in last year, it's an additional fifty-four thousand dollars, that will certainly help the bottom line. Uh again, other than that, the revenues are, as I said, relatively on course. And we just have to watch, I guess, motor vehicle excise and the ambulance. With regard to the expenditure side of the FY twenty-one budget, I think we've already identified a number of accounts that we were going to be looking for supplemental appropriations at the fall town meeting. Uh those being the human resources, uh legal expenses, forestry. Um additionally, the liability insurance account is coming up, but we certainly know that we're going to be putting money into those budgetary accounts. Um we can also add um probably a few, you know, a few other of the other areas that possibly will need money. Um again, all going back to the uh October identification when we had the uh the warrant article produced for the Octo- October special town meeting that was planned. Again, I don't think there's any major surprises there. The only one that kinda came out of the woodwork uh recently is um with the, it shouldn't be of a major surprise, with the uh with the DPW facility and the Council on Aging facility coming on board. Where certificates of occupancy will be probably granted within the next, within the next couple of weeks at best. Um the town will be assuming the property insurance on those facilities. Uh I'm not sure how much that bill is, but that that one account was pretty tight already. And I wouldn't be surprised if we have a bill for about five or six thousand dollars. We'll see if we can internally take care of that with some internal transfers. But again, it's something that just popped up recently that um it it causes a minor problem. It's certainly not big dollars in consideration of, you know, we're talking about a sixty-five million dollar general fund budget. Um the thing, the positive thing that came out going into FY twenty-two is um as a result of, there is a little typo in um in my report, um of going to the regional dispatch and also not having daycare programs going on at this point in time. When we did the retirement assessment, um we had to provide numbers for the retirement system in the fall. We then got our FY twenty-two retirement assessment and that assessment actually went down. Went down only by one percent, but the good news is we had projected probably about an eight percent increase. Um so that was a a big offset of money uh for where we had projected a higher amount. Certainly, um a lower, a lower estimate coming in for FY twenty-two is going to help our budgetary costs. Um right now, we have two point four six million dollars of free cash. That was the amount certified back in July. We have not spent any of that. In looking at the draft budget that uh is being prepared at this point in time, it looks like we could have well over a million dollars worth of of supplemental appropriations going into the annual town meeting warrant. Uh again, I'm including some large amounts in there, some high estimates with legal expenses and throwing some money in for snow and ice removal. Um but there's a great possibility that of that two point four six million dollars of free cash that about one point two five million dollars of that could be transferred into our operational stabilization fund. Um if if that does hold true, that would put our operational stabilization fund at about five point four five million. And we, given the fact that I would anticipate large turnbacks again in FY twenty-one um on the expenditure side or the appropriations, um I could see that in FY twenty-two, we could have at least a million dollars of free cash. The combination of the operational stabilization fund and free cash is identified in a policy of the select board known as our general reserves. I had attached that policy in the material that I sent. Um but to- that would now total six point four five million, where we're going to have roughly about a seventy seventy-one million dollar, um it it gets compared to uh general fund revenues. We will have general fund revenues of about seventy-one million dollars gonna be appropriated in in uh May or June, whichever the case may be. But that would put our general, our general reserves at about nine point one percent of the operating revenues, which is right at the upper level of the select board's policy of anywhere from five to ten percent. So I think relatively all that is good good news. With regard to the FY twenty-two budget, you know, we started off with a pretty hefty projection of we were gonna be uh short by about eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Um Lynn and I got most, with the exception of the school department, we got uh budgetary requests. We did get the budgetary for the amount that the school department is working on over the last couple of weeks. That pushed the request well over one point eight million dollars more than than the uh than the revenue side. So Lynn and I have been working on trying to get that number down, you know, certainly some of those are wish list type of requests, but there are certainly a number of other reasonable requests in there that we're trying to get that down. Um the one thing that I will say is, just to be upfront with the board, it is probably going to be near impossible, again, to meet all the select board's goals um that were set up, uh you know, the one point seven five percent of the two point five proposition two and a half increase. Uh goals set up for OPEB funding, uh level services and things of that nature. Probably going to be very difficult to meet that and trying to get um at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars uh excess levy capacity. So I just kind of bring that to your attention now. We'll do the best that we can in order to get you um a decent budget that you folks, that the select board can, you know, work on, modify which whichever way you folks desire. Again, we did have some good things that happened with the retirement system, as I said, it saved about two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars um from the projection to what actually the assessment is. Scantic Valley is doing pretty well at this point in time. We did have a six percent increase that was built into the FY twenty-two budget and Scantic Valley will be meeting next Tuesday, I believe, February ninth. Um and Lynn and I are keeping our fingers crossed that those increases will not be as high as the six percent that is currently in the budget projection. So we have a couple of things working for us. We would have, would have liked to have seen the state aid number come in a little bit higher. Um it it uh it was about twenty thousand dollars less than the projection um that we had put together in the fall, not a huge amount of money. But when it goes the opposite way, instead of in a positive way, you know, it almost has a double impact on you. We're hopeful that uh, you know, the state revenues will will pick up in years ahead. We got some money and a lot of that increase was in the uh chapter seventy-nine item. And certainly, there was about forty or fifty thousand dollars that was built into the uh unrestricted local aid account. So we are getting some money from the state, just again, not as much as we would have liked. And like I said, about twenty thousand dollars less than the projections would have brought forward to us, so. I've given you folks uh where the estimated receipts were, a draft report of where not only the estimate, the local estimated receipts, but all our receipts give give you a a report and that was through um the twenty-seventh of January. And the, I also attached, as I said, the general reserve policy. If anybody has any questions on that, we are, overall, we're in a pretty good position. I do not see any major changes. Um especially on the negative side, if anything. I don't wanna say break even, but break even to a positive outcome for FY twenty-one is probably where we're going.
Alright, thank you, Paul. Um I see some questions already. Uh Mark Gold?
Is, can you just give us an update on CARES Act reimbursements and what our exposure is if those don't come in or what we were expecting?
Um I don't have exact numbers for you, but the CARES Act, we did have a one point four million dollar grant. As I said in my memo, we've put in um certain things that were could could be considered borderline if they were gonna be allowed, and we certainly want to, we wanted to use up that as much of the one point four million dollars as possible. Originally, um the expenditures were only allowed through December thirtieth of two thousand twenty. So we, I don't wanna say we got creative, but anything that was borderline, we certainly put in. We received two allotments that were strictly based on our estimated expenditures. And I think they totaled about six hundred thousand dollars. Our next report is due into the state, with it was originally due at the end of January. We just pushed back a little bit. And I think we'll certainly be able to put in one point four million dollars and utilize that full. We will put in expenditures worth of one point four million, but as far as what may come back as being disallowed, Mark, um I I I don't have an estimate for you. Uh that's going to be um something that's really, that the state is going to determine. As I said, we probably put in a few things that were, would have been considered borderline. Um mainly when it comes to salary amounts. You know, we we tried to do some certain estimates of of what our former health agent, how much time she was putting in, how much time emergency management director was putting in. Um we have cer- a few other people who are paid a hundred percent out of that um um grant. And I I think that's where they may be asking for a lot of documentation um in order to bump with these, you know, getting these percentages that are being put in. And we may have some discussion with them about those. But I think in the long run, um it's it's certainly taken a lot of burden off of the general fund. And it it would, the the expected turnbacks would far exceed any amount that would not be allowed by the federal government, the state or the federal government on this coronavirus relief fund. You know, the school department last year turned back over a million dollars. Some of that was a direct result of a- able to put in certain things um and fund it through the CARES Act as opposed to the tax levy per se, and you know, some of that is still being done now. So I I think those turnbacks would far exceed, as I said, any type of disallowances that may come up with. I just don't have a concrete number for you, no more.
Thank you.
Okay, uh any other questions from the board members? Uh Paul, this is a, you know, thank you for putting this report together. I did have one question, you know, you had commented that we could have a uh, you know, six point four million dollars in the general fund, you know, um as of July twenty twenty-one. And so, you know, those reserves are needed in case if there's economic conditions that are gonna really setback and the town could be in trouble and have to have money in reserve. And, you know, you've been around a long time, you know, thirty, forty years, whatever. And what is the largest amount of economic setback to the town has experienced in your tenure?
I think the largest amount was the October of, that October snowstorm that we had a number of years ago. You know, we had well over twelve million dollars worth of expenditures. Luckily, much was taken care of by FEMA. Um some of it was taken care of by the state. But at that point in time, the uh operational stabilization fund um probably got hit with about a million dollars um worth of uh expenditures to take care of those, those portions that belonged to the town that just were not reimbursable. So that was probably the largest one. Um there might have been a few others. I think there was one other year, and it was a small amount, that we had run out of free cash and we had a large snow and ice deficit that we actually had to dip into the uh operational stabilization fund. But again, that was a small amount. Um but it's been far and few between, and we've had to dip into that fund. Uh but those are two that come to my mind. Like I said, one very small, the other one, you know, very considerable.
Okay, and and the reason we have these funds, again, I I don't, members of the board know this, but I'm saying more for the public, is that, you know, if we had, you know, two or three years in a row where we had to come up with a, you know, we had to pay these bills and then maybe we'd get reimbursed later, that that's really the the need for this fund, you know, to have this up to this level. And it also is tied to our our overall credit rating, correct?
Yes, absolutely. They do look at the amount of reserves that the town has. Um it is is part of the uh the overall methodology that they utilize for credit ratings.
Okay, um alright, that's it. Any other comments or questions from the board? Alright, Paul, thank you. And now we'll move into uh a discussion on the select board rules and procedures discussion. And again, this was something that Lynn had had discussed with me and put this together. And it is a um, you know, I think it'll be very helpful and I think it'll guide future chairs. And this wasn't a result of people putting a ton of pressure on on myself or on Lynn that I know of. But uh it just, we do wanna keep improving things and and I, I think this is an example of what Lynn brings to the table for us, you know, that she's looking at, you know, things that are are not written down that probably should be written down and things that are written down that conflict and trying to, it's like, let's get it all clean uh so that they're, it can't be used against us, uh you know, in an, in an argument in the future. And so um Lynn, I don't know if you um how you wanna approach this, if we should know the members have had it or the select board, but.
Sure, I I can just quickly just um just touch on why I was putting something like this forward to you. So I look at this more as um a helpful document, both for a town manager and for a select board and for, you know, the finance director and the administrative assistant. Uh you know, I'm fairly new to the town and um having a document like this would help me, would have um having a document like this would help me, would have helped me um early on, just figure out the logistics of the board and how you put your agendas together, how you run your meetings. So I really look at it more of as a roadmap for the meetings. And I think that uh members of the public could benefit from it as well. It can be really confusing to watch a uh select board meeting or any sort of public meeting for that matter, when you don't really understand what they're talking about and you don't know the format of what they're doing. Um so having a document like this can help in that respect to take some of the um uh confusion away and and spell it out that this is how we conduct our meetings, this is why we conduct them this way and they pretty much uniformly will always look like this. Um so this is something I'd been working on for quite a while and uh finally had enough time to pull it together uh just to present to you for a healthy discussion on it. Um I um have no illusion that this is going to be the document as it sits right now that you want. I would hope that you all have some thoughts and feedback and changes you'd wanna make because really, this is your document that helps um your meetings.
Okay, great. Yeah, there's um probably some things that people are looking at and um you know, they say, oh, yes, well, that's just the way we do it. That's there's no problem. And a few other things, people are thinking, well, yeah, I don't really remember it working quite that way. So I guess I'd open up to the floor. Um if there's anybody who has a specific area that they saw that they wanted to start a discussion over. Uh Mark Gold, I see your hand.
Thanks, Tom. I I think it's a great document, and I appreciate you taking the time to put this together. I think you'll help out a lot. I I I went through it and I actually sent to Debbie and she distributed uh some comments that I I wanted to see if people were were supportive of including, and I'll just go quickly through the additions without detailing them. The first one was in the officers section. I was add the officers in their roles and and tried to find what the role of the chair, the vice chair and the clerk is, and I and I added that. Uh I think that I also added a se- a sentence under uh the special meetings that special meetings can be called by a petition of three or more members, a majority of of the select board. That's been our our policy, and so I wanted to put put that down. I questioned why we had a a hard end date, end time. You know, everybody wants to get out on time, but I know there's been plenty of meetings that have had to run late to get get going, and so I thought that was unusual and uh you know, I again, in section two down at the bottom and paragraph five, I added a suggested that we add an item where the uh select board members can add something to the agenda by commenting at the beginning of the meeting through a vote. Uh and then in section six, which is uh a little bit more on on the regular meeting agendas. I added to paragraph B items requested by the members of select board to the chair and how the chair would respond to those. Uh and and uh also added that uh a little bit about the uh written communications, something we spoke about earlier, letters to the select board being included in the in the correspondence part. Uh you know, section four, I added to paragraph G. A paragraph G has to do with uh we wouldn't vote on anything that comes before the select board for the first time. I think we probably need to exempt uh what I call statutory obligations like setting fees, issuing bonds, approving permits, or any renewals of prior authorizations like, for example, uh trash amnesty, we we do routinely. I think that those could probably be voted on when we first see them because it's not really new information. Uh and and then I put in a little definition about voting. We've always worked this way, but when I say we always have, I'm I'm making some leaps because I've been on the board longer than anybody else and I've seen that, but we might not have seen what votes of yes, no, abstain and and present mean, and so I thought it's worth defining that our our board runs by a vote of the majority of those present and voting. Uh there are some boards that vote on based on a majority of the number of people on the board. That's not been the select board's policy, and I think we need to spell that out because in the absence of that, there could be some subject to uh discussion, whether it's a majority of those present voting or just those on the board. And so I I I put those those in. Uh there's also a comment under minutes. I think we need to indicate in here under the minutes that according to a laws in Massachusetts, the minute that somebody writes on minutes, they're they're public, even though they haven't been approved. It may be unapproved public minutes, but they're public. And so I included that in in the bottom of section six, but other than those uh changes, which I forward to everybody, I think this is a great document. I encourage other people to read through it and make suggestions and send them out, and so we could look at the voting, adopting this the next time. Thank you.
Okay. Uh any other board members have comments on what we've heard so far or any uh observations they had? Okay, I will uh say a few things. Uh you know, one is, uh you know, mark your comment uh about adding an agenda item, you know, by a vote. You know, like if if a if a person on the board said, well, let's add this on and they took a vote to add it on. Um I the struggle I have with that is that it doesn't really give the the public body of of the legislative body, which are the voters of the town, ample time to really know that this is gonna be on, to be able to um show up and make public comment. Uh so that's why I I know we've always posted the agenda in advance and and that kind of uh change would concern me. You don't have to respond to me. Um but that would be something that I would, but a lot of your other co- the other comments you had look uh were really sound very good. Uh that was the only one I took issue with. Um there was a couple of things that I probably would like to have us discuss more, and and that had to do with uh the voting and procedures and uh the idea that during a meeting, a person could actually after a vote say, I wanna reconsider my vote and and have it addressed by the board. I'd like to hear us discuss more about that. I think that's uh something we we haven't really, I haven't seen happen. Um and it would be something that I'd like to hear. And then on the uh presentation proponent, uh which is in the hearing format. And in section three, it talks about how there would be public comments, there'd be proponents and opponents. And then there'd be a way for the proponents to respond to what the opponents said and for the opponents to respond to what the proponents said. Uh that could be taken together, discussion of the chair. And then uh written comments will be read into the record uh of all those folks who spoke and so forth. And then it talks about uh a rebuttal to answers or questions raised by the opponents and proponents. And then it's closed to public comment. And then on number six, it said the select board discussion and staff recommendations. And I just would wanna have a a a comment on that number six, that in a select board discussion, no new documents could be submitted to the the process, you know, that if if someone from the board introduced a document, a letter for some sort of research, at that point, um because it's already been closed to public comment, it really is disrespects all of the folks who took the the time to, you know, um be proponents of the issue and opponents, you know, that they've taken time to prepare arguments. And then for um someone from the public body, the select board, to be able to introduce new information, I just that really, I've I've been in places where that's happened and I just really disagree with it, that if there was any new information that had to be entered, that you would then have to allow people uh the opportunity to speak to that before you could move to number seven, which would be a vote. And so I will um, you know, write that up and and uh submit that. Um and that's, that's about it for what I'm thinking. Um and if anyone has any questions on what I've said, uh please, you know, that sounds good. We could discuss that. Uh or any other comments from board members? I see Steve Marantz's hand.
Uh yes, uh there's two comments. One in terms of the um not taking a vote on the first time something shows up. Uh while I understand that position, there is uh section seven, which says the rules can be suspended at any time. So I assuming that just something come up, a vote wants to be taken by the first time a motion is made. Uh the majority of the board says, okay, we can vote on this, then that would supersede that procedure. And the second comment question I have is in terms of the vote with abstentions and present. I could not find anywhere in my search of Robert Rules of Water, a definition of the vote of present. So lots of definitions for abstain, and we do need to make a decision if five members are there, three abstain, then that's not a majority of the people there, doesn't pass. Two people abstain, three, five people are there. Um one votes no, two votes yes. If five people are there, that then becomes the majority of folks. Yeah, I that that still needs to be a little worked out, abstentions, and as I said, I could not find the Robert Rules the definition for present, so if if that if you
I'll send it to you, Steve.
Um please do, because I spent a good portion of the afternoon looking at the rules, got abstention pretty well set, and depending on what the board defines as, if you're there, that's one thing, as opposed to voting members, that's another, you know, I I got that, but the present one. And I'm not sure the difference between the two as far as a vote goes, if I abstain. If we make the definition of the majority of people there, if I abstain or vote present, I'm not sure either one makes a difference. It's a majority votes. You know, the majority votes, yes. So but I'd like to see that. Otherwise, it seems to be, I agree, I think, you know, it's obviously something that's needed. Lynn, thank you for the the obvious amount of time you spent putting into this.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Um I'll have to check my Robert Rules book. I I've had it since nineteen seventy three, so it's probably an early version. Um any other comments from the board about this decision to put these things in writing?
Can you see, Tom, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um so yeah, I I appreciative of of Lynn for putting this together. I think it's it's long overdue. I was also surprised when uh my first got on the board that there wasn't anything in writing that kind of defined this stuff, so uh thank you Lynn for doing that, and thank you Mark for going through it in such detail. Um I think a lot of it looks, most of it looks looks good. There's a couple of things, um I think I probably have um a couple of comments on, but um so so my question is, or I guess my request is that maybe um uh Mark incorporates all these changes into uh the the document and then resends it so we can, instead of making comments on the original draft uh as opposed to making comments on the Mark's amended draft, uh I think it'd be easier, at least for me, to be able to to um make suggestions um on a document that incorporates all these changes that Mark suggested.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be glad to do it, but I'd rather have Debbie to do it, to tell you, tell you the truth. And she's got a copy of it. That way, if Tom sends her anything or Steve sends her anything, she's got them all all together and puts it together, and then we'll send them out the next time.
Right, and so any board member should send comments to Deb, and then we could uh have them there to discuss further. Um because as you, as you go through it, I I there might be one or two areas that you're not quite sure about. And um you know, I'd I'd like to have us, I'd like, it would be great if we had a unanimous vote on this document that that really seems fair and uh straightforward. So, all right. Any other comments on that? All right, well, good. It was a good start. And again, um it it, you know, I didn't find a lot of mistakes. I didn't find things where I said, oh, this doesn't make sense. Uh so it was great, and it was nice to get some more clarification. Um, all right, so uh I believe that is our our full agenda. Um you know, we, you know, we will be getting busier as we get closer to lunchtime. Um but I guess I'd look for a a motion to end the select board meeting. Okay, and second?
Second.
Okay, Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, that means we can all go out and play in the snow. Um I'll put my skis on, I'll do a loop in New York. Uh take care, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks.
Hey, thanks.